Good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of March 6, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton. Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Heubik.
Here.
Thank you.
And I know Ms. Moulton is going to attempt to dial in. Would you join me in the pledge? Okay, items one and two off the list, and on to item three, which is announcements and committee reports. A couple announcements from me. I'm sure most of you have heard by now the sad news from the Washington State Ferry. But the Washington State Ferry Service released an updated restoration plan on Monday. The timeline for restoration of the international run between Anacortes and Sidney, British Columbia, has been extended to 2030, per Washington State Ferry, due to a shortage of qualified crew and retirement of vessels. This is the reason. On March 13th, which is next council meeting, Washington State Ferry's Government Relations Director, John Vanzina, will present the restoration plan to the city council meeting during our next regular meeting. So we won't shoot the messenger, but we'll want to hear from Washington State Ferries. Other, a little bit better news. Thanks to the council's support, last week, we closed on the Station 3 Molly Lane property. So now we own the fire station that we have been renting for 12 years. So we think that's good. I know Mr. Hoagland will bring the financing plan shortly. But thanks for that. Also, more good news for the 2023 budget. We've finally brought onboard our stormwater code enforcement person, Aaron, and I forget his last name, but Henry would remind us. And then the last, also, thanks to council's support, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers recommended the safe flood storage for Seattle Skagit Dams. And that's part of the Federal Regulatory Commission FERC permit, the 50-year permit that our concern was they weren't holding enough water there, and that threatens our water treatment plant that serves 56,000 customers pulling water from the Skagit River. So again, thanks for that support. So that's enough for me, and I would note that Carolyn, Councilmember Moulton, has joined the meeting. Can you hear us, Ms. Moulton? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Next is 3A Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland, sorry.
So we had our Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee last Thursday. It was more of a brief discussion. We were really trying to hammer out the final details of the utility discount program. We've seen the utility costs go up quite a bit. We know that there are a lot of folks that are hurting either, and we want to be able to streamline it, streamline the discount program, so that more folks are able to utilize it. So that would be anyone who's got a senior tax exemption from the county or disability exemption. Also, we want to work on a permanent affordable housing, so they would be automatically enrolled. So those two groups, those two groups, plus the Housing Authority and Family Center, because that's permanent affordable housing based on income. What we haven't hammered out is some of the nitty-gritty details of when we're talking about the number of qualified homes, whether or not the assumption is it's based on four people in the household or two or one. So we had a good discussion, but what we really need to do is have a little more clarification and what kind of impact the number of households that would be eligible would have on the bottom line for the utilities. You know, we know that there is some, there is a real need for those that are in the low and extreme-low income brackets to have some relief, because those utilities have gone up significantly. But we also need to make sure that it fits in with all of our requirements when we move forward with utilities and planning for improvement. So I think we have probably one more meeting to clarify some of those final questions, and that was it.
Okay. Public Works Committee. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Mr. Young and I met with staff as the Public Works Committee earlier today, just before this meeting. We talked, first of all, about the chemical bid resolution that's in our packet tonight. I'll skip over that for now, but we can answer any questions. Water treatment plant demolition of the old water treatment plant is still proceeding. There has been a delay in opening the bids for that, because our bidders asked for more time to provide some of the information that we required of them. So that's just delayed a week, and bids will be opened this Wednesday. Public Works has also been talking to us, and we've been talking to them, about water line replacement schedule program and budget. And we currently budget about $1.4 million a year for water line replacements. The replacement water lines should theoretically last up to 70 years, but the lines that are being replaced need to be replaced now, and we are seeing an increasing number of failures of existing older water lines. There's an agenda item tonight for about $1 million, which Public Works perceives to be a very good deal, a good bid for that project. But still, we need to spend more money moving forward on water line replacements so that we can eventually complete all of those replacements. And in line with that, Public Works has identified as a priority, which has been a priority for Public Works for some time, to replace the water line that is beneath Commercial Avenue. Because if the state does come through at some point with funding to completely rehabilitate Commercial Avenue, we want to make sure that our work has been done prior to that occurring. And we're probably looking at $3.4 to $4 million to do that rehab of the water line underneath Commercial Avenue. And we don't want to be in such a big rush that we don't have the money to do it if the state eventually does decide that they're going to fund that pavement overlay of Commercial. We then also talked a little bit about trucks on M Avenue, specifically M Avenue north of 12th Street, where you've got the ACT Theater, the library, church, another church, Coslin Park, a lot of kids. It is a street that a lot of people walk, and there are a lot of trucks. And this has been an issue for about 10 years or more. A lot of trucks move in at fairly good clip through there on their way to Trident. So we brainstormed a little bit, potential solutions to that. We have tried a number of things in the past, but they really haven't worked. We also communicated the virtue of flashing crosswalk beacons, like we have installed in the last few years on Oaks Avenue and just recently on A Avenue near the entrance to the Forestlands. And then one report of dangerous passing activity on 12th Oaks, especially near H Avenue. And then, and that concludes the Public Works meeting. One other follow-up. At our last city council meeting, we heard from the assessor's office about property tax generally and how that works. And thank you to Mike Pearl, one of our audience members, who identified that the Fidalgo Flats building, the notorious five-story building, had actually not been entered into the assessor's database for any building value. And the assessor got back to us and noted that, yeah, they missed that, and they have sent someone out there to assess it, and they'll be issuing a revised tax statement. So it sort of belies the information that the assessor told us that property tax is transparent. You can look up anybody's property tax on the website, on the county's website, and good catch, because now that can be corrected and will be. So thanks as well to the assessor to getting right back to us for that.
All right. Thank you. Any other announcements or committee reports? I think the planning committee did not meet, so if you see that on there, it did not meet. Okay, we're going to move on to item number four, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for many members of the public to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda. And I've got four folks signed up to talk about items that are not on our agenda. So I'll go ahead and call you up if I can read the writing, the names. First up, I have Mary LaFleur. Topic is T. Avenue. And three minutes is what we normally authorize. And if you agree with somebody, if you want to just follow on, to respect everybody's time, you can just follow on and say, I agree with that. All right, and state your name and where you live. We just need the city. Yep, and make sure the microphone is on.
Oh, there we go. Mary LaFleur, I live in Skyline. We have a property on T. Avenue, Bounty Marine. I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, because it's getting worse. And I know I've talked to Matt a few times, and there's a lot that has been done. And I've seen the fire department down there. I've seen the police department down there. They are working it hard. So where's the holdup? Where is the holdup with the council? Why aren't there ordinances? But we're tired of getting diesel taken out of our trucks. They actually take the lid, so we got a locking one. But I had my boat in Anacortes since 1987. I never locked the doors for 25 years, and I live two and a half hours south. I have over 4,000 clients. A lot of them live down south, and a lot of them live here. And my phone was blowing up for the last three weeks over T. Avenue. People are sick of it. They want something done, and it's these special interest groups that are running our town. They are a small percentage of our people. They're trashing our neighborhood, and it needs to stop. And we need your help to stop it. We're tired of getting robbed. We're tired of being threatened by them. You drive down the street. They're blocking the street. You have to drive around them. The garbage is everywhere. You need to put a stop to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I've got Marke Newman, T. Avenue.
My name is Marke Newman. I live on 38th, which is above the store. So the T. Avenue isn't specifically, you know, I don't have property there or anything, but I have driven down there several times, and it's gotten worse and worse. And I was down there two weeks ago, and there was just one little tent, one little blue tent. I drove down there last night. There's now a huge tent. There's a makeshift living quarters there. The tents are now completely blocking the whole green area. Like Mary said, there's trash everywhere. Anyway, I'm embarrassed for Anacortes that we would have this happening. And I don't know, I know I just read an article that Coronado, down in California, has a two-step rule. First one is you go talk to the people and see if they can get any help, which I know you guys have been doing. Second one is you enforce codes, and boom, they're gone. So do we not have the codes that we need to be able to enforce this? Is that the issue? Does the council need to come up with some new codes? Or do we have codes and we are not enforcing them? That's a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Gardner.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you. I'm kind of on the T. Avenue, but all throughout Anacortes. A parked vehicle on a street, it's just by itself, isn't the main issue. It's all the living stuffs they've got around their vehicles. It's a health hazard. I think that's the big problem of health and violation there. Parking a vehicle on a street, I think that's 72 hours, give or take a little bit, but it's all the stuff that's around it on public property. My question is, we are all taxpayers, or most of us are. I would like to see our taxes maybe go to some cameras down there, because there's a lot of drugs. And if we can catch whatever, wherever this is coming from, so that our taxpayers can go back and take care of our streets and sidewalks where it should be going. But maybe some sort, I don't know if there are cameras and stuff. But I understand, you know, we are short-staffed, and I sympathize with that, and everybody's doing the best they can. But I do thank you, and maybe we need some eyes out there, that maybe someone, cameras or something, where they don't know where they're coming from, or they don't throw rocks at them or something. But thank you again.
Thank you. All right, next up is Mike Pearl. And I've got property tax, Fidalgo Flats. And I think that's audio in chambers as well. I'm just reading what you wrote down, what you wanted to address the council. I'm giving council a little preview of what you wanted to talk about.
Sorry, I didn't quite hear what you said at the end.
I'm giving council a preview of what you were going to talk about.
Okay, great, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, City Council. First thing I wanted to discuss was to thank the council for presenting Denny Hagan last week.
A little bit closer to the microphone.
Thank you. That was a good presentation, and there were a few people in the audience that responded to that. And especially to Councilman Walters, who contacted me and contacted Denny and pursued that. And he ended up having someone come out to reassess that this last week. And I hadn't seen the results of it, but that was a pretty good response, and I think you get kudos for that one. Second issue is the audio, and tonight is the first time I've been able to hear clearly for a long, long time. I don't know whether the volume is turned up or whether the system is, but one of the folks that spoke last week said she couldn't hear anything. I've had staff people here tell me that the audio was poor, and I think that discourages people from coming in and even listening. Next thing is, I'm really objecting to letting the expiration continue with the bonus height ordinance. I think that's a big mistake. I know there's some legal things that happen to happen, timelines with that. But the idea of allowing from Commercial to M to have five-story buildings there, I think is really way out of place. I also think that that should be something that should be considered of going to the city to vote on it, because a lot of people, I come across quite a few people that comment on it, and there hasn't been any activity really to speak of since, for the last couple of years, since, you know, we had 150 people here in the audience who were objecting to it, on and on. Last thing, I live on O. Avenue, and it has issues similar to M, I think. And it's a thoroughfare off of Commerce, off of 12th, all the way down to 22nd. A lot of people take that as avoiding Commercial. The speed limit, I'd like to see that portable speed limit sign with the blinking lights on it. I think that would be a help. If it gets on there, people might use it. There's, every day, there's people that are running 30, 40 miles an hour motorcycles, hot rods, and just people in general that aren't really trying to not pay attention, but it's a straight shot down in both directions. So I think there's, that's an accident waiting to happen, especially at 17th and O., because that's where the high school kids come down when they get out of school. And I've seen many, many, many almost accidents and quite a few accidents. I think that'd be a good response for the police department, give you a report on that intersection. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, I don't have anybody else signed up, but I imagine there's a couple more folks that want to address the council, or they're waiting for the topics later. All right, I'm going to take that as waiting for the topics later in the agenda. So I'll move on to checking online. Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda, items 5A through E. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Hearing no removals, I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter to approve agenda items, consent agenda items A through E. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? A motion carries. We are moving on to item six, which is public hearings. And the first item is 6A, Washington State Commerce Community Development Block Grant, CDBG COVID-19 Grant Closeout. This is a discussion item with possible action and possibly closing the public hearing. And I thank Ms. Grange for stepping in at the last second, as Mr. Misimer took a little bit ill right before. So thank you for stepping up, and we'll all be kind to you to get through. And I think you're going to introduce somebody. Go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the audience and council. So the city was awarded $24,968 from the Washington, from the Washington State Department of Commerce, Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funding to support activities in response to issues raised by the coronavirus pandemic. $8,073 was allocated to the Anacortes Housing Authority. And that, those funds assisted three households that had been impacted by coronavirus layoffs resulting from, excuse me, layoffs resulting from coronavirus. And that funding helped them pay rent for three months. $16,895 was allocated to the Anacortes Senior Activity Center for remote learning equipment and exercise opportunities to help seniors stay active. And to provide a little bit more information on that, I will introduce Senior Center Administrator Carl Wolfswinkel to talk more about that program.
Thank you, Libby, Mayor, members of the council, and residents of Anacortes. As Libby mentioned, I'm Carl Wolfswinkel. I'm the administrator at the Anacortes Senior Activity Center. And I'm just going to give you a little bit of a background of who we are and what we do, and just talk about the technology project as well, and our hopes for the future. So our mission is to create a place where seniors thrive. So we are over on 22nd Street, near Fidalgo Pool. And every single day of the week, we provide opportunities for wellness, social engagement through our wonderful facility. We often see between 100 to 200 people per day at the facility. In February, we averaged about 135, to give you, per day, and with the highest number around 200. We also have a nutrition program run by Skagit County Public Health. They serve meals in person to 20 to 50 people on a daily basis, Monday through Friday. And about 75 to 85 meals are delivered via Meals on Wheels through our volunteer and staffing from, through Public Health. And I wanted to make that data point, put that in the back of your mind as we talk about the reach of folks that we can connect with via the hybrid programming. A couple of upcoming events and new programs, again, opportunities potentially for utilization in this hybrid program. This year is our 50th anniversary, so 1973 to 2023. So we've been serving Anacortes residents for 50 years in Anacortes. About half of that has been in our wonderful facility on 22nd Street. We spent the 80s and 90s in the basement of this building right below us, and a couple of basements of churches throughout the years as well. So certainly something to celebrate, and we look forward to an open house in the fall to showcase a lot of the vested parties and interests in our facility. We also have Songshine, which, as the name implies, utilizes voice for individuals impacted by stroke, aging voices, et cetera. To strengthen those, that program is run by a voice pathologist. Interplay is a layperson that runs a program using movement, voice, stillness, and story to connect, to connect us with one another. And then finally, a functional fitness class that expands upon strength and balance exercises. Fall prevention is a big topic, and again, this is mostly in-person, very successful since January, and maybe something we can expand with the hybrid programming. So Hybrid Technology Project Overview. So we've been doing this, we've been in this business since about October 2021. So during the shutdown, because of COVID, we, staff and volunteers and our foundation, were engaged with a lot of other senior centers around the country to brainstorm how they were reaching seniors in the time of the shutdown during COVID. And we're looking at different technologies to make the Zoom experience a little bit more realistic. And the technology that kept surfacing was Meeting Owl Pro Camera. I'll show you a picture here in just a minute. Actually, there's a picture right there. This is set up. Yeah, there'll be a better photo here in just a moment. But that was a pilot project. We started in October of 2021. Since that time, we've reached about 600 virtual participants in our programs. And in the spring of 2022, so after about six months, we decided maybe this is time to amp up the program just a little bit more. So again, with staff, members of the community, of our foundation, we put a technology team together, as well as city IT staff, to look at how we could scale it up and cover more rooms in our facility. And again, the Meeting Owl Pro Camera and supporting hardware surfaced to the top. So right around that time, we got a call from Joanna Stewart in Planning, and she mentioned that there was a grant available, and she asked if we had any ways to spend money. And I've only been an administrator for about 18 months, but I've learned that you say yes to these things. So that's what I did. And thankfully, those items on your right, we've purchased, we spent about $14,000 so far. Most of this technology is housed in this building at this point, but we're getting pretty close to installing it. So what you see here is a flat-screen TV, so we have three of those. We hope to outfit about, or not about, we hope to outfit four of our five meeting spaces. We just needed three television screens, because one of the rooms is set up with a drop-down screen. This is the Meeting Owl Pro device, so we got six of those. So that's a camera, 360-degree camera, speakers and microphones built into one system. iPad to use as controllers for the Zoom, and then three laptops. And this final thing, I know it's a little unassuming, but we're pretty excited about this. This is a controller for one of our rooms that has the drop-down screen. So again, as all told, we spent about $14,000 so far. My second bullet point here is just examples of programs that, I mean, really, almost any program that we offer could be impacted and brought to, out to the community, to folks that are at home. And the final point is, this is data from the U.S. Census Bureau. This is a few years old, actually, but we have anywhere from about right around 4,000 people, 65 and older in Anacortes. So as Libby mentioned, these are people affected by COVID, people that maybe are just a little bit timid about coming out. New variants are coming out, even weather-related events. This will help us to reach folks that we otherwise wouldn't be able to. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, this is a public hearing, because it's closing out our CBDG funds. So I will offer, any members of the public wish to comment on this? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any questions or comment. Mr. Young.
No, I just, you know, the, I just really wanted to commend the Senior Center for the work that's been being done. You know, we have a larger senior population in Anacortes and incredible workers, incredible organizations that we all participate in. And so it's always exciting, as I get older, that, to hear about things that's happening. And so I really appreciate it, what's happening at the Senior Center. So I just wanted to commend the staff and all of the inner workings with parks and all the other groups, just for the good work that's being done there. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I'd like to second Mr. Young's comments, and thank you, Mr. Wolfswinkel, for making these opportunities available for people to participate remotely. And thank you for doing this presentation, because it's a great way to do some outreach to people who might be watching at home. So I really appreciate these staff presentations about the resources that we have. So thank you. Great job.
Mr. Walters.
And the other component of this, the $8,000 that was allocated to the Anacortes Housing Authority to assist three low-income households with three months of delinquent rent, I think that that obviously was incredibly valuable to the Housing Authority and to those three families. But it, we were aware of it, because of the connections that we now have with the Family Center, the Housing Authority, and some of the other providers in town. And so we have been helping to close that information gap, and I think that that's really important, because otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to provide this money that we were looking for places to spend. I understand that we need to move to approve closeout of the grant activities, as they have been accomplished as outlined in the scope of work, so moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath to close out the Washington State Commerce Community Development Block Grant COVID-19. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, you take the vote, please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Heubik.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We are moving on to another public hearing, item six B. This is ordinance four oh four two, amending the developmental regulations contained in the Anacortes Municipal Code Title Nineteen Unified Development Code, Section nineteen forty-two dot zero five zero, bonus height incentives in the R four C and CBDG zones, CBD, CBD use zones. This is a discussion item with possible action. And again, Ms. Grange, thank you for teeing this up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, council, and members of the audience, again. At its February sixth meeting, the city council reviewed the planning commission's recommendation to allow the moratorium adopted under ordinance thirty fifty-four in twenty nineteen regarding bonus height provisions in the R four use zone, west of the commercial use zone, to expire. Mr. Walters, Councilmember Walters recommended a few changes to the bonus height provisions in the municipal code at Chapter nineteen forty-two oh five oh. And these included increasing the percentage of units that were six hundred square feet or smaller that needed to be incorporated into a project in order for it to qualify for the bonus height, and also allowing for indoor open space and balconies to be counted toward up to one hundred percent of the required internal open space for any project utilizing these incentives. Mr. Walters' revisions are incorporated into Attachment A of Proposed Ordinance four oh four two, which is in your packet. The proposal, when it went out for public comment, was left with a range of percentage of units required to be less than six hundred square feet. So that was between thirty and fifty percent. The current percentage in the code is twenty-five percent. Staff's recommending not more than thirty percent be the, the minimum requirement for those units. And this is a public hearing on the proposed changes that have been identified in Attachment A of Ordinance four oh four two. We did receive one written comment, and I provided a copy of that on your, on your desk there before the meeting. And tonight's public hearing was advertised in accordance with the requirements of the Anacortes Municipal Code. That's the extent of what I have prepared this evening, so at this point, it might be appropriate to open it up for public comment.
Mr. Walters.
I wanted to note, first of all, that we also did receive quite a number of public comments prior to opening the public comment period. So while this one may be the only one that occurred within the period of, of written comment, we have gotten a number of others. Just before we go to the public hearing, I wonder if staff might explain the basis for your recommendation of the, sure. So before we go to the public hearing, I wonder if staff might explain the basis for your recommendation to choose the number thirty percent rather than the higher end of the range of fifty percent as the threshold number of six hundred square foot units that are required to exercise the bonus height option?
As stepping in for Mr. Meesmer this evening.
Sorry, microphone?
Pardon me, thank you. Stepping in for Mr. Meesmer this evening, I don't have the specifics behind that recommendation, so I couldn't answer that question this evening.
Oh, all right. So I just note that Fidalgo Flats, the only example utilizing this bonus height provision, they built their building with sixty percent, so even higher than the proposed range. Sixty percent of their units are six hundred square feet or less.
That's correct.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, well, thank you again for filling in. And so I'll open this to public comment, but the comments have been received, as Mr. Walters pointed out, but the, the public hearing is on those two different provisions, the thirty to, the staff recommendation of thirty percent and the, the open space provision as presented in the packet. I know many of you want to address the council on the height provision, but that is not what the public hearing is for. So anybody want to address the council on that? Yes, come on up and state your name and where you live.
Just, just the town you live in. You don't have to give an address.
Okay, can anybody hear me? Okay, I'll try to speak loudly. My name is Bradford Augustine. I'm the builder and owner of Fidalgo Flats. We built it based on the height bonus, and really, I'm here to talk about something that we learned after we built it. So we interviewed not all of our tenants, we have twenty-five tenants, but we probably interviewed twenty, and the six hundred square feet is just a number that somebody made up. And here's the problem. So because it's six hundred square feet, and we chose to put sixty units that are smaller sized, the issues at hand are, none of our tenants can put a dresser in their bedroom. Most of them have to rent self-storage somewhere else because there's not enough storage, like a linen closet in the bathroom, if you go to Costco and you buy toilet paper, or if you want to put, you know, your towels to change out, there's no room in the bathroom to make that work. And then, of course, if you have any gear, like a snowboard, or skis, or roller blades, or whatever, you know, so they have to rent storage. And so I think the original plan was, let's keep them small to keep the rent low. But if you look at the housing action plan, by the way, fabulous piece of work, it, it references two dollars and eighty cents, or two eighty-one a square foot. So the difference between a six hundred square foot apartment and a six hundred and fifty works out to about a hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents a month. And if you take the cost of a self-storage unit, seventy-five to a hundred bucks, plus the fact you've got to get in your car and drive to your locker, I think you should change the six hundred to six fifty to give more utility, and I think that's important. I support fifty percent, thirty percent. I don't have an opinion there as far as number of units, but I do think that the rooftop amenity is a valued space, and I don't think you should give that up. Because if you live in a small space, you kind of want to spread your arms out a little bit, and I think a rooftop space is probably a better utility than taking valuable heated space that could be rented and turn it into amenity space. So those are my thoughts, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions. And one other comment, the property taxes at Fidalgo Flats, I personally called the assessor's office the day we got our certificate of occupancy, and they said, gee, you just missed our assessment for twenty twenty-three, and so you won't get reassessed until sometime in twenty twenty-three for twenty twenty-four taxes. So I just think it was a timing issue, but it was nothing other than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public want to comment on this issue? I, I think there was probably a couple other items introduced in that, but I'll turn it over to council before I close the public hearing. Oh, okay, yeah, come on up. And, and I know it's annoying, but if you can state your name again, so we can find it if we, for some reason we have to review.
Council member, council members, mayor, thank you.
It's Pat Gardner, right?
I'm Pat Gardner, excuse me. Sorry. Parking, I know the buildings have allocated places to park, you know, parking for everybody. But most families are small, or people that live together, whatever, two or three cars. And this is going to, whether this particular unit, apartment complex, or others that are in the future, need to allow for parking, because there's, if there's going to be a family in there, everybody's got a car nowadays, we don't, you know, and so it'll, you know, affect street parking. And there is, and a lot of our streets are kind of narrow. And so you go to pass, you've got all the cars parked on both sides. So when we decide to authorize buildings to, you know, be developed, we need to allow for, definitely for parking. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Pearl, come on up and.
Mike Pearl, Anacortes. Not quite sure how to go after this, but the idea that the developer decided to use sixty percent of the build, of the units as six hundred square feet seemed to indicate to me that he certainly exceeded the twenty-five percent, and that only thing I can see is that equates to more money for him anyways, to the concern about where people put their storage. I don't know what the configuration of a six hundred square foot unit is. But again, they designed it, we didn't design it. It'd be interesting to know the, the rents for those six hundred square feet, if they're all the same, or because there, some side may have view, I don't know what the layout of the building is either. But I think those considerations, you know, complaining about being able to have more units must be making him more money falls on pretty deaf ears, as far as I'm concerned. And as far as the taxes are concerned, just missed the tax deadline. That, that again, sounds more along the lines of, we missed the whole project in the first place. They knew that demolition was going on, they knew the construction was going on. I haven't seen what the, the tax levy is going to be now, but everybody in Anacortes is paying for them to make, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars a month, whatever it may be. I think they could pay their fair share for the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else want to address the changes? All right, council. Ms. Cleveland, you're going to help kick this off? Thank you.
Sure, I'll kick it off. I'm going to focus on the percentage of total dwelling units containing no more than six hundred square feet. So first of all, I want to say thank you for all of the comments. I think that it was, it's insightful to hear the comments we've had, also to hear from some feedback about the existing five-story building that was built, and probably some, some modifications that we should go back to planning and discuss because, yeah, if they're, if folks are having to rent an additional space, and it's a matter of some modification, then that's the kind of feedback that I think we were all looking for when we did a major redo of the development regulations. I'm starting, I will start off just because I was the one who threw out the thirty to fifty percent. I think that Mr. Walters upped it from twenty-five to thirty. The reason that I suggested a range, and I'd like to hear from the rest of council, is, you know, if, yes, if we are going to allow for that additional ten feet, then how do we make that beneficial for the rest of the community when we know that inventory-wise, we don't have enough single, one-bedroom units available for folks who need them? Yes, it's still market rate, but, or it can be tied to, tied to area median income and monitored, but we haven't seen that utilized except for the Family Center. So, so my, my suggestion with the range and looking at, or at least entertaining a higher percentage was just so that there was greater kind of good for the general public and the, the community. Again, though, I'm, I'm open to that whole discussion.
Mr. Young.
I want to echo what Ms. Cleveland McGrath has just said about just this whole discussion we're having about what do we really want? Is it really beneficial to the very people we're trying to address? And how do we go about codifying methodology for pushing forward from here? And I honestly don't believe everybody will end up being happy about it and trying to figure out how you strike a balance that truly benefits the public, as well as incentivize builders to continue to build those things that we need, because we already have a huge shortage of housing, as is in the rest of the country, I'm sure, but particularly as we address what's here in Anacortes. I do appreciate, though, the feedback, I think, came as a result of the six hundred versus six hundred and fifty square foot size that Mr. Augustine brought forward. I had not considered that, and I think that that's something that council should take a look at, and, and because fifty feet, and that, it's just the economics of it, and, and then also, you know, to the point that, to the point that, you know, needing additional storage, you know, I'm one of those guilty people who have storage that I've been pledging to get to and clean out, you know, and every month, every month I have to pay, and just trying to, so I, I get it, I mean, I honestly do. But I didn't, given that we already have Fidalgo Flats, what I didn't hear from Mr. Augustine was an objection to the percentage, which I also thought was important, because I think at the end of the day, the reality is that if we can at least get thirty percent, trying to do as much as we can in the building format to make sure that it's at least by size affordable, I think that that's something we should consider, because I don't find it to be a detriment to what our goals are here as a council and as a city. So, you know, I wonder how we could do that, I don't know, but I'm sort of putting that out to council as well.
Yeah, I appreciate you putting that out, because I'm thinking about the legal requirements for notification, if, if that would be required on, on that, on a six hundred versus six fifty, or opening that discussion up. But I, I think it's worth, worth saying, stating right up front that council's probably not ready to take action on this now. So I take that one, but then we can figure out what we would have to do to, to look at that again. Mr. McDougal.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm in, I'm in agreement with Cleveland McGrath and Mr. Young. The percentage, I'd be in support of thirty, forty, or fifty percent. You know, we, we know that really, the entire West Coast, but, you know, in particular, Western Washington is desperate for inventory, especially for smaller units, for essentially either, either younger homeowners, or, you know, renters, or folks that are looking to downsize as well. So we're, we're desperate for inventory. I'm very encouraged to hear that the, the current building is sixty percent. I did not know that, so that's, that's great. On the unit size, I'm a little skeptical, because I know that, you know, you can, you can carve up six hundred square feet in a lot of different ways. I have a daughter in college in, in Seattle, and we're looking at just, you know, for, like in next year, like, what do apartments look like? And you can, there's four hundred square foot apartments in Seattle, all over the place. So, you know, you, it can be carved up, so I'd be interested, like, if we are going to sort of address that one, I'd, I'd love to hear from an architect, what are the trade-offs? Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
And Ms. Heubik, I think.
Hi, thank you so much. I echo everyone's statements about being happy with the suggested percentage amount. I'd like to see something a little higher, forty to fifty cent specifically for myself. I also want to echo in thoughts on the building size. I'm in a five hundred square foot ADU here in Olympia, and there are a lot of very creative ways to find storage for yourself, kind of stacking things in bookcases, going to Goodwill, and finding, you know, interesting little hooks to hang your stuff on, if we're actually talking about reaching out to people that are maybe getting their first apartment on their own, or finding a place to live with a small child after leading a domestic violence situation. People may not have dressers, and they may not have a need for some of the storage spaces that people that are downsizing, possibly after the loss of a spouse, or something like that. So I think there's a lot more things that can be taken into consideration, depending on the audience and the people that you're trying to actually rent the space out to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moulton, did you want to?
Sure, yes, I would agree that there are a lot of creative ways to use six hundred square feet of space and to include storage in that, and so I'm not convinced that six fifty is the way to go. In fact, I just met a couple today that live in a four hundred and fifty square foot place, and it's perfect for them. So I'm, I'm fine with keeping it at six hundred, and I also am amenable to increasing So I'm fine with keeping it at 600 and I also am amenable to increasing the percentage. I think that that would be a good way to go. And then I'm not totally sure about the rooftop decks not being an option either. I think that that, we should talk a little bit more about that too because I'm not convinced that those are, I don't know if we would eliminate them or what the idea, I'm looking at my notes here, I don't, I'm not sure what the idea of that would be because I think the rooftop deck can be a great amenity and I'm not convinced it's a bad thing based on what I'm reading or seeing.
And Ms. Grange, can you address what I think I'm interpreting on the change? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The revisions have been drafted such that the rooftop deck would still be an option if a development wanted to incorporate that. It just increases the amount that balconies and internal common areas could count toward the minimum open space. So it's not, you know, forcing people to do a rooftop deck to meet those minimum requirements if they have another way of meeting them.
But to Ms. Moulton's point, I think your concern is you might want to force them to have that open deck. Is that how I'm reading your input?
Do I, I'm sorry, can you repeat?
So, I mean, this 100 percent of the required open space may be provided by common indoor, so you could eliminate any, that essentially eliminates any requirement for rooftop. Is that how?
Correct.
Okay.
But you could do a rooftop.
But you could, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't mean you can't do it.
Right.
Okay, that's the information I'm looking for. It's not eliminating it.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to get, sorry about that.
No worries, thanks.
All right, looks like Ms. Cleveland.
So just because I can't keep it in my brain, what is the rooftop deck percentage currently? Is it 50, it can count towards 50 percent?
Correct.
And then hypothetically, let's say you have a bike storage room, does that count as indoor open space?
It would not.
Okay. So it can't be storage necessarily, shared storage, it has to actually be gathering spaces?
Correct, usable functional space.
Mr. Walters.
Well, I'm glad we're talking about open space because that's first in my notes here. I proposed the changes to the open space requirement in our code because the family center's new building, which they're building under the alternative provision of the bonus height, but is still subject to our open space requirements, includes a rooftop deck that they don't actually want, and we are helping to finance that building because the requirement for that rooftop deck is driven by the open space requirement. Under no circumstance are you actually required to do a rooftop deck today. It's one way to fulfill the open space requirement. And if you're building a building that uses almost all of the lot, you are highly likely to build a rooftop deck, but it's not the only way to achieve it. However, if you are building a rooftop deck, then you are going to have an elevator shaft that goes beyond the rooftop deck because you've got to get out of the elevator at the roof, and it will constrain maybe some of the architecture. So for instance, the family center building has, the new one, has a somewhat sloped roof, but obviously not where the rooftop deck is. So the change proposed here does not prohibit rooftop decks, it does eliminate what is effectively, although not explicitly, a requirement for it. And I think that makes sense because if you want to do a rooftop deck, you would still be able to do that, but you wouldn't be driven by our code to do it. I think we do have two data points here with respect to the threshold number of units required to qualify for the height bonus. First, 60 percent is the number that's in Fidalgo flats today, and then Mr. Augustine, the developer of Fidalgo flats, just said he was okay with 50 percent. Mr. Miesmer has apparently recommended 30 percent, but we don't have a justification for it. So I think we should go with 50 percent. We are getting that benefit to the city of having smaller units that fulfill a market that we need to be able to house the people that work in our restaurants, that work in the hospital, that we have a severe need for housing, and we have a need for that part of the market. And so I haven't yet talked to anybody who has been advocating for us to willy-nilly raise the height limit. They see that as something, even those who are proponents of higher buildings see the height limit as a necessary evil to achieve more housing. I think that the trade-off ought to be cheaper housing in smaller units. So I definitely advocate the 50 percent threshold number. Now, I am also open to changing the square footage threshold from 600 to 650 with appropriate analysis. I believe that this is the second time, the second developer from whom we've heard that 650 is a better number than 600, but we can't change the 600 to 650 in this process without taking additional public comment on this, and that would potentially delay this process till after the expiration of the moratorium. But I also don't want to do it just because we've heard that, I would like to see more research and analysis associated with that. So I similarly do not propose that we make that change right now. What we could still do is we could still roll back the geographic limitation. As I proposed last time we met, we could stop five stories of height at O Avenue. You know, I think Fidalgo flats, almost on Commercial Avenue there in that first block, Commercial Avenue is the right place for this kind of construction, but M Avenue is not. So I would still advocate that council restrict the geographic area where the bonus height is allowed. That was within the range of alternatives originally offered for public comment. I proposed that last time, I didn't get any support for it last time, and so maybe I won't again today. But I do want to point out it's not too late and we could still, we could still do that. Otherwise, I think we have a fairly straightforward proposal here to make some simple changes that improve things. I do think we would be making a mistake by continuing, by allowing the moratorium to expire and then allowing the five-story height on M Avenue, but the changes otherwise proposed would make everything a little bit better even if that is allowed, and it would benefit other buildings in other areas as well. So I would urge us to approve those other changes at the 50 percent level.
I did not expect that you would not bring up the geographic changes, so I do appreciate that position, but I was, but thank you on the 50, I was going to take a poll of council at least to get a couple of the areas knocked down, so maybe, probably not proper Roberts rules, but on the 50 percent, having the small units with 50 percent, if I could get a poll of council, 50 percent versus 30 percent, maybe go down the line and say, do you want 50 or 30? That seems reasonable to save two votes. Mr. Carter, 50 or 30 percent as far as?
I'm okay with 50 percent.
What was that?
I'm okay with 50, I'm okay with 50 percent.
Mr. Young.
As a first choice, I would choose 30 percent, and that's simply because I think we have to have a mixture and we want to make sure that we have a mixture of sizes, economics, and, but I'm okay with 50, but I would prefer 30 percent as an incentive.
All right, well, everybody only gets one vote, but we'll note it for the record. And Mr. Walters, 50, Ms. Cleveland, where are you on that one?
50.
And Ms. Moulton, sorry, trying to work down the line.
Sure, 50.
Okay, and Mr. McDougal?
I'm fine with 50.
Okay, so I think we have enough consensus for the 50, and then the other aspect of this, any further debate on the 100 percent of the required open space to be provided common indoor area?
Mayor Miller?
Oh, Ms. Moulton, sorry.
Sorry, did you ask Ms. Hubick?
Oh, thank you. Dang it, it's hard to go from the screen to IRL, what I refer to as in real life. Ms. Hubick, where are you?
Totally okay, I figured I had stated it well enough earlier, 50 percent.
Yeah, that's what I thought, thank you. Okay, so the next area, the 100 percent of the required open space that may be provided common indoor recreation area or balconies? Where is council on that one? Leave it as is?
Would you repeat?
So, well, what's in your packet is that the 100, that previously it was stated as 50 percent of the open space can be provided by common indoor recreation areas or balconies. Now it's 100 percent. Did I get that correctly, Ms. Grange? Okay.
Correct.
So I'm trying to get council's feeling on that one.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland, and then Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleveland, then Mr. Walters.
Well, one point of clarification, I'm, yeah.
Mr. Walters.
So the other piece of that is that the total amount of open space is reduced by half. So imagine Fidalgo flats, you wouldn't have the requirement to provide the total square footage that is used by the roof deck either. So you could, you could achieve it through your balcony or your indoor recreation area. But, do we follow that? So the total requirement is reduced by 50 percent, and then the allowance for balconies and indoor recreation space is up to 100 percent of that 50 percent so that you don't have the driver to do the roof deck, but certainly you still can.
No, good point. I was reading the second half of the change in option one, so appreciate that. Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, and I thank you for that because I think that that's, even though I've read it multiple times, that's helpful for the discussion. You know, going back to the family center, I think that the fact, they're in a unique situation when we talk about not wanting the rooftop deck because they're essentially a campus and they have outdoor space built into some of their other properties that are adjacent for kids to play at and for them to congregate at. So I, what, if it's, and the Housing Authority has some of those similar features in some of their developments where there is gathering space and playground spaces. So I can see how that individual building at the family center did not necessarily need that rooftop deck, but if we're seeing individual developments that don't have access necessarily to those kind of larger spaces, I'm less inclined to reduce the overall space by 50 percent because, you know, having somewhere to go and be outside and sit down, that's semi-private, is necessary without having to go a couple blocks away to a public park or somewhere else. I'm not necessarily comfortable with reducing the overall amount of open space by 50 percent.
Okay.
Mayor Miller?
I just want to make sure, so you're opposed to the language as written in the ordinance change?
I'm not as, I'm, I would like to have more discussion on it.
Okay, Ms. Moulton.
So I'll continue the discussion. Thank you, Ms. Cleveland McGrath, and we're talking about small units here too and 50 percent of them. So if I have a small unit that's 600 square feet, I think open space is going to be pretty important to me, again, if it's not right next door or across the street like a park. So I'd like to continue this discussion as well because I'm not convinced that cutting that in half is the best way to go.
Okay.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I agree with that sentiment. I think that, you know, the goal is to, outdoor space is just so important right now, particularly in our seasons that we have here that can be pretty dark, and, but I think it's important, I really do.
All right, anybody else on council want to weigh on this? We'll be bringing this back possibly next week, we'll see, but I think I've got the consensus on the 50 percent piece. Mr. Walters.
Well, in the spirit of continuing discussion on this part of it.
Geographic, got it.
Consultants from Opticos, which is the land use planning firm that coined the term missing middle housing, would tell you that the urban environment is the amenity. It's the street, it's the coffee shops, it's the parks. You will be paying a park impact fee to develop a building of this type. The history of the last 100 years of development in the United States is we keep piling requirements on development of housing. You have to have a lot of a certain size, you have to have a house of a certain percentage of that lot, forcing you to have the backyard, and certainly people enjoy that, but we haven't allowed the market to drive it. We've prescribed that this is what you're going to have, and that has had the effect of driving up the cost of housing, reducing the supply, and also increasing the expense. So the proposed language here would allow the market to provide the rooftop deck if people want that, and according to Mr. Augustine, maybe they do, and they could do that still. But if the market finds that they don't need the rooftop deck, and because there might be some buildings that don't, then they could achieve the building and all the place that people can call home within it without the expense, the extra height, and all those regulatory components that go into the rooftop deck requirement. It's not likely that any builder would actually provide the open space on the ground because you'll be sacrificing all the airspace above it. So instead, you know, they could provide an indoor recreation area, which in this climate might be more utilized than others. I think, I mean, if you go to condo complexes in Seattle, you'll find they've got a mix of both. I'd love to have a mix of both, but again, it would drive up the cost and it would reduce the amount of dwelling units you could fit into the building. Not for nothing, we also heard a lot of people complain about the elevator shaft and all the mechanical equipment on the roof that goes even beyond the 50-foot height limit once you've exercised the bonus height. And again, you would still be able to do that, but we at least wouldn't be driving you towards doing it if you didn't want to. So I strongly support the language as proposed because it allows the market to figure this out, it allows us to do all the things we just, several of us said that we wanted them to do, but it also allows the market to pursue something else for a different building in a different spot or for a different set of eventual owners or renters. And I think we ought to let the market figure that out in this instance.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
So maybe we should talk about some real numbers to put this in perspective. So Ms. Grage, or maybe Mr. Augustine can tell us what the current requirements are for how many units or just, just kind of give us, what does it look like now? What's open space required per capita or per apartment versus what it will be? Because, you know, I don't always trust, one of the reasons we're doing small units is because we don't, the market's not always going to be the best arbiter of what happens. And not to say that we're like perfect either, but I'm not convinced. So Ms. Grage, do you have numbers for us about what the open space is now for Fidalgo flats and what it would be if we did 50 percent?
I don't have the numbers on Fidalgo flats specifically. Mr. Augustine may be able to answer that, but in the code, the requirement is based on the number of bedrooms in a unit. So it would be 100 square feet per unit for a studio or one-bedroom dwelling and 150 square feet per dwelling for dwelling, excuse me, for dwellings with two or more bedrooms. So 100 square feet for one-bedroom or studio and 150 for two-plus bedrooms.
All right, well, maybe we can work to get that info for this continued discussion. Again, I'm going to go whatever the council's will is, but I'm, as you know, I'm always trying to move things along and I'm hoping to maybe get some insight on this 600 versus 650 piece. Ms. Cleveland, you're going to, you're going to go with that?
Sure, I'll answer that. I mean, I think that that is a discussion to have at the planning committee level. I would want to see some sketches and have a better understanding of kind of Fidalgo flats as an example versus the family center, I think has some units that are less than 600 square feet. It makes sense from kind of on-the-ground feedback, but to me, this isn't something that I'd want to include in, right now in this project, and I think it would require some more discussion. The other thing that I didn't mention before, but I do think we need to also work on very quickly, is the fact that, yes, short-term rentals are not allowed currently in our four zones, but they are allowed in the CBD, commercial, and mixed merinos. And if our goal is to have these bonus heights, then we need to make sure that we address that, that missing issue sooner than later.
Thank you. All right, let's see, I haven't heard from Mr. Carter or Mr. McDougal in a while or Ms. Hubick, anything? Mr. McDougal?
I think I'm fine with the language as written, but if council would like to discuss further, I'm also okay with that. Very much in support of Ms. Cleveland's Very much in support of Ms. Cleveland's point about, you know, making sure that short-term rentals are not something that can, that we're allowing in places where we're allowing these bonus heights because that really defeats the purpose. And also open to the, the discussion on the, uh, the square footage number. I think, you know, to, to your point as well, like, would like to just see examples and, and data and like.
Okay. Any, Mr. Carter.
Yeah, the, uh, I've seen 600 square feet work, uh, but I'm also not opposed to seeing what 650 looks like. I think it would be great to, to compare the two side by side and see which benefits more. Also, I'm in agreeance with, uh, Mr. Walters, that the way it's written with the 50%, it doesn't necessarily mean that the rooftop space isn't going to be there, but it also does just allow more options for builders to bring in more buildings. It may bring in that extra person that would be willing to build something versus someone saying, well, I'm just not going to do it. It just allows more options and, you know, people, they, they can get outside. People renting apartments like that, they know what they're getting beforehand, so it's not going to be a surprise to them. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Ms. Hubick, anything else? All right. I, all right, uh, uh, okay, so staff has a little more. Ms. Hubick, go ahead. Since I called you out if you had anything else to add. We're going to bring this back. And it looks like you're frozen. All right, well.
Mayor Miller, can I just pop in for a second?
Ms. Moulton, okay.
Thanks. I'm just, I am concerned about kicking this can down the road and if we, if we don't, I, I mean, I know we're not going to make a decision tonight, but does that 600 versus 650 stop us from doing this before?
I, I think the only unanswered question on the 600 or 650 is whether we've got to have an additional public hearing, and I don't think we're able to answer that tonight.
I think we would need to have an additional public comment.
Okay, so we'd have to open that up, so.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
To be clear, I don't advocate, and I don't really think I heard others advocate for including that in this package. Although, you know, leaving it open for further contemplation in the future, but not this package.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not.
Okay, okay, good. I see a lot of heads nod, so that, uh, that sounds good. So what we're, we're going to bring back is a 50% and then, uh, and then have some discussion about this, uh, the portion of the subject to half of open space, I think is still, uh, in option in, uh, 1942-50C. A little more discussion on that. Okay, uh, good discussion and, uh, we'll move this along and bring it back to council. Onto item seven, which is other business. This is Resolution 3113, supporting Proposition 1. This is a public safety staffing levy, and this is a discussion item with possible action on the resolution. And, uh, Ms. Swetnam is going to kick it off and then we're going to hear from our, uh, public safety chiefs.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Miller and members of council, members of the audience. I'm going to be really brief because I'm just teeing up the discussion and then both chiefs are going to get up and provide some more information. So, this is a resolution in your packet that allows council to express support for Proposition 1, which is coming up on the April 25th special election ballot. Uh, so I just put the language of the ballot measure on the slide. So it's the Anacortes City Council adopts, adopted Resolution 3103 concerning funding to improve public safety service levels and response times. The proposition would provide funding for five additional police officers and eight additional firefighter medics by establishing a maximum regular property tax levy of $1.34335 per $1,000 of assessed valuation in 2023 for a collection in 2024, an estimated increase of approximately .36240 dollars per $1,000. The 2024 levy amount will be used for purposes of computing the limitations for subsequent levies under RCW 8455. So this is the language that will actually appear on the ballot. Uh, so council is authorized by RCW Section 4217A 555 to allow, to, uh, express support by adopting a resolution of a ballot proposition if the notice includes the title and number of the ballot proposition, which our council agenda did, and as long as council members and members of the public are afforded an approximately equal opportunity to express an opposing view. So that's the, the purpose tonight is to get some more information about this and to allow for public comment. And that is all I have to say. So we'll turn it over to the chiefs.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, tonight we want to talk about our departments, um, some of the.
A little closer on the microphone, make sure everybody.
Every time.
Yeah.
Talk about our departments, some of the challenges we're facing and how increased staffing will help us face those challenges. First, let's talk a little bit about how the fire department's organized. Right now, we have three chief officers, 25 line staff members, one community paramedic, an administrative assistant, and three volunteer firefighters. Although we currently have seven volunteers in our firefighter one academy that we have high hopes for. Um, it'll be sometime before they are fully operational.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I wonder if you might drag Carolyn somewhere.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, sorry, the box, Carolyn, you're.
She's just a little distracting.
Yeah.
Please do, thank you. You can, like, I'm just, I'm actually.
Our line staff, while there's 25, um, they're divided amongst three shifts, um, and then spread amongst our three stations, um, which generally means there's six personnel on duty each day to respond to emergencies. I think most everybody understands that we respond to building fires and ambulance calls. But one thing that, that's, we're, often seems to surprise folks when we give presentations is that we're also responsible here in Anacortes, um, and on Fidalgo Island for the wildland firefighting and our forestlands and parks, technical rescue, including vehicle extrication, rope rescue, confined space rescue and water rescue, all hazardous materials response, uh, code enforcement, fire prevention, public education, as well as many other public services. We respond to water leaks, lift assists, we replace smoke detector batteries and pretty much anything else that folks call or people will call 911 for. As I mentioned, we respond out of three stations. Station number one is downtown, station number two out in Skyline, station number three in Marches Point. Unfortunately, due to our geography, we have to spread those six personnel I talked about earlier amongst those three stations. One of theirs, there's a lot of competing factors, the number of personnel we put on scenes, as well as many others, but, um, in my opinion, that first unit on scene is the most critical. So if we, if those stations are empty, it takes far too long for a unit to get from downtown to Marches Point or to Skyline. And that'll be a theme throughout the presentation tonight, and we'll talk about it in several different contexts. One other situation we face here that's a bit of a challenge is, again, while you may drive past station one and see multiple bays with a ladder truck, a rescue truck, and a couple of medic units and a fire engine, there's still only two personnel in that station. So, those same two personnel cross-staff, which means whichever type of emergency comes in first, if it's a medical call, they get in the ambulance and they drive away. That leaves every other apparatus in that station out of service and unstaffed. Again, one of the major challenges we're facing that'll run throughout this presentation is our increasing call volume. Um, since 2012, it's increased by 60% from 2,694 to 4,317. It's been a pretty steady rise, as you can see by the graph, um, and there's no reason for us to think that's not going to continue into the future. Of those calls, every year it's really close. This is 2022 numbers, but about 83% of those calls are, are EMS and about 17% are fire-related. And by fire-related, really, I mean everything that's not EMS. That includes all those other types of calls, um, that I mentioned in there. One thing I want to point out there is that we had 26 structure fires in 2022. Of those, 13 were inside the city limits and 13 were out. The reason I want to point that out is, as we talk about staffing, um, we share services with districts 11 and 13 that are on the island. So, when they have a fire in their districts, we're responding to those, and in turn, they respond to every one of the fires that we have here in town as well. One of the other issues we're facing is, is that call volume has risen and we're out of service longer for traveling distances. It's created in 2022, 899 instances of overlapping calls. That means at least two calls were going on at the same time. And we'll, we'll talk more about that in detail, but anytime that happens, it leaves multiple areas of our station, of our city uncovered and creates much longer response times, uh, than we want. Again, this map shows the primary response areas for our stations. One downtown is in blue or turquoise. Station two in Skyline is in red and the Marches Point area, um, is in blue. Again, that's just the city limits response area. We have first two medical responsibilities for all of the wide areas you see, as well as even a little bit further east, um, out to Bayview and La Conner. Our medic units are responding out there for all calls. And but one of the issues we're facing is of, even though we have, we put two personnel in each of these stations, 57% of our calls occur in the station one area. So when those call, when a call happens in station one's area, Jim, let's go on to the next slide. You can basically consider that area to be uncovered, the area that shows up in gray here. And that's if it's a single BLS call. And BLS call is about 40% of our medical calls. BLS stands for basic life support, which means an EMT level call. Generally, generally, that's less critical, although we don't always get the same information on dispatch that we get when we get there, but we can only respond with the information we have available to us. So because of that, we only send the one ambulance or, or one medic unit to that call. It's not ideal. In, in a perfect world, we'd send multiple units to all calls for a number of reasons, the size of the patient, stairs and, and a multitude of other reasons. But again, that rising call volume and the overlapping calls, uh, everything we do has an effect. So if we send two units to these calls, then there's less units to cover Skyline, Marches Point, or wherever it may be. Again, I'm just using station one as, as an example here. An ALS call is generally more critical. That's a paramedic-level response that may require advanced interventions, IVs, medications, advanced airways, usually more time, time-sensitive and may very well be life-threatening. And so because of that, it's more time-sensitive. We always send two units on initial dispatch to those calls. So if, uh, generally speaking, uh, station two is the second closest unit, so the medic unit will respond from station one, the engine company will respond from station two, and now really the entire, the, the bulk of the city is uncovered. Uh, the only unit left in service, if they're, if they're not on a call, is station three out in Marches Point. And you can imagine responding from Marches Point to Skyline could be as much as a 20-minute response time. One of the, we talked a little bit earlier about the four-minute response time. It's not an arbitrary number. Um, you'll see the little graphic down at the bottom. That's from the American Heart Association. When we talk about truly critical calls, like heart attacks, strokes and things like that, you know, brain tissue and heart tissue begin to die and have irreversible, irreversible damage after four minutes. It depends on, you know, there's a lot of other circumstance, but that's kind of the standard that we work on. We try to get that first unit on scene that can breathe for a patient, do CPR, or in the case of a fire, to, to put water on the fire, at least from the outside in the first couple of minutes. So, so far tonight, I've mostly talked about EMS, but I do want to talk about fires just a little bit. The, uh.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I'm sorry, if, if you go back one slide. 899 overlapping calls.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for, uh, actually, I skipped over the two, the level zeros as well, so.
And get really close on the mic for this statistic too, because I.
Everybody wants to hear what you got to say, chief, so get it in the mic.
The, uh, so 899 times in 2022, there were at least two calls happening at, at the same time. There were actually, of those 899, I think it was 153 times, there were three calls at once, and 11 or 12 times, there were four. With only three staffed units, you can imagine that fourth call had a, a long wait. At least twice, I can think of, a Burlington medic unit was the first ambulance that arrived on scene, um, at our calls in 2022. The level zero means we were completely out of units. So some combination of ALS calls requiring two units or, or, uh, three BLS calls or whatever it may have been, took all three of our stations out of service for whatever reason. And in that case, again, the closest fire department would be, uh, closest staff station would be out in District 13, out on the Sonomish Reservation. The closest medic unit would be coming from Burlington, who also is suffering from the same call volumes we are, um, and are oftentimes out of service there as well. To answer your questions. So again, with fires, I mentioned, we have six personnel on duty, uh, each day. And in the daytime, there's a couple of chiefs as well, two to three, depending on the day. The NFPA calls for 16 to 17 firefighters to be on the scene of an emergency within eight minutes. That's a difficult one to meet, uh, in small-town America. However, Resolution 1946, which, which this council passed in 2016, calls for 12 firefighters to be on scene within 11 minutes 90% of the time. Um, in 2022, we met that zero times, um, and to the best of my knowledge, we haven't met it ever. Again, with only six on duty, every other responding agency we have is an all-volunteer department. Districts 11 and 13, their 11 specifically are coming from home. Takes five, six, 10 minutes before they even get to the fire station before they can drive into here. Um, in 2022, at the structure fires we had, we averaged, uh, six and a half firefighters in 11 minutes and just over 10 total on all this, on those 13 in-city structured fires I talked about earlier. Other issues we face, um, and we've talked about this quite a bit in years past, is imminent rescue, two in, two out, two in, one out. Again, with only two personnel on a fire engine, there's never a time when a crew can legally enter a structure fire, even if they know for certainty that there's a victim inside that fire. That's, it's very difficult to know for certainty, um, to, to utilize the two in, one out. Under almost all circumstances, even in the middle of the night, when we can assume it's realistic for someone to be in the house, that doesn't meet the whack. So it takes four personnel on scene before we can have the two in, two out and make entry to either extinguish the fire or look for a rescue. The graphic there on the right, you'll see it, that came from the firefighter rescue survey. That's 2,000 rescues. And you can just, it, I put that there just to kind of show that as time passes, um, survival rates of the, the folks who are pulling out of those fires drops. And obviously, for any, even if we're all staffed, coming from station two into station one's area, seven to 12 minutes, depending on the address. So you'll see how that'll drop off pretty quickly. Any questions before I turn the mic over to Chief Floyd?
All right, uh, thanks. We'll, of course, provide opportunity for questions after you're both wrapped up as well.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, members of council, members in the audience. The police department, uh, is currently allocated for 28 commissioned officers. Of that 28, there are three administrative positions, which are comprised of the chief, patrol captain, administrative captain. We have a detective sergeant, a detective corporal, two detective positions allocated. One is currently unfilled for a general crimes detective. We have three patrol sergeants, three patrol corporals and 15 patrol officers. Though the Prop 1 does not address non-commissioned staff, uh, it is noteworthy that we have one annual control officer that also serves as part-time parking enforcement, one community service officer, uh, that handles crime prevention, manages our volunteers. We have one record services manager for records clerks. Council had approved a part-time parking enforcement position, which we are currently, uh, in the recruitment process for. And there will be, uh, uh, interviews later this week for that position, so we are, uh, moving forward in a positive direction there. Our patrol division is staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week. As the complexity of our call-response changes due to local policy, state law, and, uh, requirements from our court system, it requires the officers responding to those calls to spend more time at the scene, uh, more in-depth investigation. And as I've mentioned to you previously, using the domestic violence example, uh, much.
more care for the victim at the scene, all of which takes additional time. We also have to deal with individuals that are human beings, and so life happens for patrol officers. We have to account for vacation, sick time. Our state mandated training is 24 hours a year minimum. I can tell you that the training that is required by CJTC currently is well beyond the 24 hours that was set several years ago as the minimum standard for training, with the training that came out of Initiative 940, patrol tactics, de-escalation. It's well beyond the 24-hour minimum. At a time when call volumes, crime rates are continuing to rise, we have maintained a high level of service to our community. When many departments are trying to find efficiencies to address the crime rates rising and staffing challenges, they have cut services in the form of mail-in reports, online reporting. They no longer do lockouts for vehicle, individuals that have locked their keys in their vehicle. All those things, the Anacortes Police Department has maintained. When you call you're the victim of a property crime, you speak to an officer in person here. Also, in this graphic to the right, you'll notice we have, as I alluded to earlier, five positions that are currently unfilled. I'm happy to report that our latest recruitment effort was very successful. We currently have four pending conditional offers out right now, and those individuals are working their way through the background process. So I'm starting to see our recruitment efforts pay off, and the challenging job market seems to be currently tilting our direction, which is encouraging. I'd like to specifically point out, the paragraph here at the top was taken out of the RCW. This revised code, Chapter 10, 12010, was as a result of legislative changes in 2021. And part of the reasonable care standard that was established in that legislation gave de-escalation tactics for officers to use in attempts to resolve situations with lower or no levels of force. Several key points in that was slowing down the dynamics of the call that you're at, taking more time, allowing dialogue between the officer and the individual that you're dealing with to diffuse that situation without having to use force or using much lower levels of force. It mentions resources in here, and specifically goes into greater detail at the bottom, talking about resources available as crisis intervention teams, Disney crisis responders, other behavioral health professionals. As many of you know, being on the extreme end of the county, it's difficult to get many of those resources here in Anacortes. We've made great strides with our contract we have with the family center, and they've aided in trying to get many of those here, as well as the grant that Chief Harris wrote through Washington, Association of Washington Cities. We now have individuals that are contracted that have those specialties, though it's a very small number of hours per week. So what we can rely on most frequently is additional officers at the scene. And as Mr. Walters had pointed out previously, seeing that in action resulted in a much more effective resolution to response of an individual in crisis. Having five officers show up at a scene, because we were fortunate that incident occurred at a shift change, when we had both our day and swing shift available to respond, as opposed to a day shift would be at minimum staffing levels, and we have two officers for the entire city. Dramatically different outcomes. You'll note in this graphic, these are our most common property crimes, and I'd like to specifically point out the property crimes in 2022 that are shown in green. Many of these are crimes of opportunity, and having the officer presence to deter individuals from committing those crimes contributes to an increase in the quality of life experienced by our community. We also have some that's probably a little more difficult for you to see, but these are our top calls for service in 2022, as well as serious crimes. And while the previous graphic showed dramatic increases in property crime for 2022, our serious crime classifications in Anacortes are much lower than other cities respective to the rest of the state. And so this shows the tremendous work by officers in the Anacortes Police Department. Though staffing challenges do occur regularly, we are still one of the safest cities in the state. As I mentioned previously, each shift, our day shift, swing shift, and night shift, is staffed with a sergeant, a corporal, and four officers. But that does not mean that all six of those individuals are working at the same time on any given day. We have to account for officer days off. We have to account for training, as I mentioned earlier, vacation, and sick time. Here is two examples of, straight off of our schedule for this month. One is this Thursday. You'll note, out of the six people on that schedule, I have two that are working the day shift. Consequently, the following Thursday, we have four. So there's a wide variation in those staffing levels sometimes, and that's just depending on what the circumstances are that given day. Our staff is extremely motivated to come out and do a good job, but filling some of these gaps with overtime is not a sustainable way to staff our police department. And if we want to continue providing the high level of service that our residents have not only become accustomed to, but expect from their police department, we need to look at ways to address the staffing levels. This is some of the examples of what our patrol staff does. As you probably all assume, responding to 911 calls is the vast majority of our patrol time, spending their hours in the workday. In addition to that, we have, as I mentioned earlier, required training and many community engagements, because our community partnerships are one of the strengths that we find in the police department. And because there is staffing challenges, we recognize that it's not feasible to accomplish some of these tasks on our own without engagement with the community members. I'll bring Chief Harris back up. We can discuss Proposition 1 further, unless you have any questions specifically about the police department.
Okay, any specific police questions, or we'll just carry on and then get the questions after. Keep going.
Get this one. Way shorter than chief. All right, so what we're going to try to do here is just kind of to present to the public and to council some of the things we've been hearing, questions that have been being asked of our staff and of us, and I think mostly of you and the mayor, and just get some of that information out, and then hopefully answer some deeper questions about that. So Proposition 1 is a request for a single-year levy lid lift. This levy lid lift would be utilized to hire five additional police officers and eight additional firefighters. First, the levy is simply the total amount of money the city collects in property taxes each year. It's normally capped, as we discuss every year, to 1%, unless the voters approve, and this is that opportunity for the voters to choose whether or not to approve an increase greater than 1%. In this case, it would be in 2024. A levy lid lift allows the voters to approve increasing the levy rate to an amount equal to or less than the statutory maximum rate of 3.375 per 1,000 of assessed value. For reference, our current rate in 2022 is 98 cents per thousand here in the city of Anacortes.
This graphic here shows what the cumulative increase at the 1% allowance over the course of 10 years, being a grand total of 11%, as opposed to the cumulative inflation rate for the same time period being over 30%.
The other question that's come up a lot is, well, one, where does all of our money go? And also, it looks like my property taxes went up more than 1% compared to last year. So Anacortes currently, of all the property taxes paid for a resident, 13% of that, or 13 cents for every dollar, goes to the city of Anacortes. You can see that the state of Washington and the school district have much larger, they come up with 56% total between the two. The county's also 13%. The hospital's 9%, and the four smaller EMS, the port, the pool, and the conservation district total out to 9% also. All of these levies are, fall under that same 1% maximum. But the other things we voted on in years past, the schools and pools and things like that, those levies we've chosen to go more than 1% is why the total bill sometimes looks to be more, more than 1%.
The cost to homeowners in the city of Anacortes, if Proposition 1 would pass, would be approximately 36 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. Just to put that in context, for example, if you owned a $650,000 home, that would be just under $20 a month at $19.50. The graphic to your right shows the rates of Anacortes compared to other cities located within Skagit County.
Probably the most common question I've gotten is, where would I put eight firefighters every day? And that's, that's the point that I really want to make, is that it's not eight firefighters per shift or per day. On a 24-hours-a-day, seven-day-a-week schedule, it takes eight firefighters to fill two seats each day for 24 hours a day. And that's just kind of, that's just the way that the math worked out. I think we talked about that quite a bit early on. So those, the firefighters, they would be currently, I think you, on the earlier slide, you'll see we had 25, three shifts, that's unbalanced. We have three shifts, two, excuse me, two shifts of eight, and one has nine. So that's why the funny number comes out to eight and not a multiple of three, is we would, the eight personnel would make each shift to 11. The, having that, that additional personnel on staff would allow us to staff a second unit downtown at Station One, which would cover, when we have that ALS call I talked about earlier, Stations Two and Three could stay in quarters to respond to those calls. When Station Two or Three have an ALS call, one of the units from downtown would respond out, but there would still be one left for that first less-than-four-minute response time. And that's really the critical component of, from an EMS perspective, of this entire proposition and need, desire for increased staffing, is that dynamic, is to keep those units in service and allow folks to have a proper response in a timely manner. So overall, our response times will drop by being able to keep those units in service, being able to put two units immediately onto the downtown calls. And obviously, then on fires, we'll add two more people per day to that effective response force we talked about earlier as well.
For the police side of this, I think it's very clear the emphasis is needed most in our patrol staffing, and that's would be the focus for the new positions that we would add to the police department. Doing the, doing so would help reduce response times to emergency calls, would allow greater opportunity for officers to engage in proactive policing and address many of the crimes that we, I talked about earlier, especially the property crimes that have a dramatic effect on quality of life. Having those additional patrol staff also allows the proper amount of staff for de-escalation, taking that time, and having the additional staff there to be effective in the de-escalation efforts. Also, officers that are just running nonstop from call to call for their entire shift, they don't have a chance to complete the reports that go along with those, any charging documents that results in overtime. We try to minimize the overtime because that has an impact on that individual outside of work, their family life. So allowing us to be staffed appropriately also helps with our recruitment efforts, and most importantly, our retention efforts to prevent burnout of our current employees. Because there is many departments across the state that have failed to address this and have become known as training grounds, where you use that place to get into the academy, and as soon as you have your two years in, you are transferring to another agency pretty quickly. There has been agencies in Skagit County that have experienced that. Fortunately, Anacortes has never been one of those agencies, and we would not like to start now.
Another big question we get is, why now? You know, why the sudden need for increased staffing? And from a fire perspective, it's certainly not a new need. In 2014, the city hired CityGate to conduct an outside review of fire and EMS services throughout the city. At that time, based on the 2014 call volume of 2,900, and new five or six-story buildings in town are planned, at least to the best of my knowledge, they recommended having 12 firefighters on shift at that time. Following that plan, again, I mentioned earlier, but the city adopted a non-binding Resolution 1946, which was, we refer to as a six-year plan, which called for increasing the staffing incrementally to nine per shift, per day by 2022. As of today, even though call volumes have risen, as I mentioned, to 4,317, we're still at that six that we were at in 2014.
The three bullet points you see under the police side, increasing crime rates, legislative changes, and changing expectations, in, by themselves, can each be contributing factors. But I would suggest to you that those are all interlinked. Some of the crime rates, not all, are a result of some of the legislative changes that we've seen in the last couple of years. Changing expectations is also just the demand for our industry to adapt and look at policing in new ways. And all of those things combined have contributed to the increased need for additional staff.
Okay.
Answer any questions you may have?
We've come to that point in the presentation for questions. I'll open it up to the public if anybody wants to ask some questions. I see one hand. And, all right, come on up.
Hi there, my name is Connie Miller, and I am an Anacortes city resident. And I'm just learning about Proposition 1, and I have to read my question because my memory's bad. So I believe this might be, I'm not sure if it's for the chiefs or for the council, so forgive me, but my question is, why can't these additional staffing costs be covered in the normal city budget? Would you like to go with that?
We'll let, we'll let the chiefs take a stab at that one.
I know that many chiefs before me, and I can probably speak for Chief Harris, chiefs prior to him, have continually asked council for additional staffing. And council has to balance those requests with many of the other needs that the city has and services that city residents find important, and-- that city residents find important and would like to keep and not have sacrificed for additional staffing to address public safety concerns.
I would just add, just to comment on the same sentiment as the chief, is, kind of what makes Anacortes, Anacortes, is our forest land and our parks and our culture and all those things. Yeah, there's probably some truth that some money could be shifted into-
Closer. You gotta eat the microphone.
Going through the budget, this question comes up a lot. The, going through the budget, there's not really what I would call a lot of fluff in the budget. We have what we have, there's not a ton of money being put away, we're spending the things, again, that makes Anacortes, Anacortes. It would be disappointing to me if we reached the point where we have to cut services and we reach a tipping point where we can't provide fire, EMS, or police services unless we make those other cuts. And again, as we talked about, we kind of touched on it earlier, inflation has simply outran the 1% ability for us to tax.
Sure. Anybody else want to ask a question? Okay, go ahead.
I just have a follow-up to that. So, will these dollars, if Proposition 1 passes, will these dollars be earmarked only for police and fire, and they won't be used to make Anacortes or keep it Anacortes or any other part of the budget?
Yeah, I think the answer is, yes, it can, that can be done, absolutely.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. It can be done or it will be done?
It will be done.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, that's the intent, as I understand it. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I'll turn it over to council for, and again, this is the resolution for supporting Proposition 1. It seems kind of strange, because obviously council put the resolution on the ballot, but this is the support resolution for voting. Counsel? Mr. Walters?
Just one quick comment. Thank you to both of our chiefs for their excellent presentation. Maybe it wasn't as interesting as the sharks with laser beams that we get sometimes from other presenters, but it's really important stuff, and I would encourage people to go on the website, I assume it will be there later, so that you can download it and study some of the material there, especially the call volumes and the number of concurrent calls, the number of times when there are concurrent calls and no units available to respond to a medical call, maybe a serious medical call, maybe my medical call, is particularly scary. And the fact that sometimes a day we've only got a couple of officers on duty, when there have been in Skagit County some really bad incidents, mass shooter, more than one mass shooting incident. I feel a duty as an elected official for the city of Anacortes to help protect the citizens of Anacortes, and that comes down to funding our first responders and our agencies. With respect to one of the questions, we put in our resolution, putting this on the ballot, that we will fund eight more firefighters and five more police officers with this money. And we did that, first of all, for us, to know that we are, we calculated the amount that we needed based on those numbers, and we committed to it in the resolution so that it does happen. But also, because that's what we did with the Affordable Housing Sales Tax, the 1/10th of 1% we passed a couple of years ago by a vote of the people, and we appreciate the people's vote for that, because we committed to three particular projects. We said, these are the projects we are going to build, and the second one is going to open its doors here shortly, and the third one is in development. Similarly, with the transportation benefit district that we have, we had a car tab tax that the council had imposed. It was $20, uniformly hated by everyone. And so, we proposed an alternative 2/10th of 1% sales tax, and we said, if you approve that, we will rescind the car tab, and if you approve that, we will dedicate 100% of that money to fixing roads in Anacortes, and we will not supplant existing revenue when we do. And by and large, we have done that as well. We have kept our promises in the last eight years as to how we put things before the voters, what we provide very good specificity on what we're going to do, and then we do it. So, I certainly appreciate the question, but it's, I think we do have a good track record of making that happen.
And I apologize for not answering that as forcefully on that question, because it's extremely clear to me in the resolution that it's for eight firefighter medics and five police officers. So, that basically makes it the law for somebody who had to execute that. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Again, thank you for the presentation. I think that the need is made clear. You know, one of the things that I like, someone said at the last council meeting, I am not tax-averse, however, I like to tax as little as possible and only for the things that are absolutely necessary, that we need. I think that the argument for us in bringing this forward and hiring additional staff is a necessary thing. I think we really do need to begin to address some of those things that we see happening in other cities that, you know, naturally spill over to a city like Anacortes. You know, we have housing challenges, we have unhoused challenges. And so, you know, those are things that I think that you're beginning to have to address, whether those calls that are coming in to either of you, some of those are about behavior, mental health, all those issues you're addressing, and those are costs to our system that we still pay, and whether or not we add that in or not. I personally, I agree with, although I don't agree with some of the mandates, I think that our department, police department and fire department have a stellar team of people that are cut above. I wish I could say that for other parts of the country. Sometimes, because of those other parts of the country, the requirements and mandates that are placed upon you are the result of them and not having that thing. So, sometimes those things are very necessary, and unfortunately, benefit or solution uniformly is applied to you as well. And, you know, but again, I'm very much supportive of what we have here. I do have a question, though, about, given that, you know, my spouse was in medicine and we operated here, and that's part of business structural analysis is what I did as a career before I came here. My question really is about, given parts of these calls that are coming in are, was being addressed by the agreement, I believe, between the family center and the police about a social worker for some of those issues, those social issues, behavior issues, the reason why council, as well as the partnerships we establish with the family center, community action, all those other agencies to try to begin to address those issues and address those people in need of service. Mental health is a huge issue that we are beginning to readdress as a country, which is necessary. Is part of this, will part of this be also in addressing that? Meaning, you know, whether it's called an embedded social worker, whether it's called a social worker, whether it's called, you know, because you guys do social work by also going out, meaning you do policing and you de-escalate, but you also deal with mental health issues and everything else. So, I want you to answer that question, but I believe that what we are doing here in my reluctance for additional taxes, I believe that in this instance, this is something that would truly benefit our city. It will allow us to have the tools that we need to begin to address those issues we're all confronting, and that it really becomes a way for us to utilize the services we have to their maximum benefit. So, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Young. As I mentioned during the presentation, you know, our agreement with the family center, we have gained a fair amount of ground in having those specialists available to us to address some of the mental health concerns, but the reality is, until we can assure that there's seen safety, I don't know of a social worker that's going to go into a potentially volatile situation without at least an officer on scene to assist in ensuring safety of all other parties involved. We have made a lot of progress using those individuals, and we have the ability to request some of those specialty units from other agencies. One of the things I neglected to mention during the presentation, and one of the great challenges for us that Chief Harris alluded to as well for the fire department, is Anacortes has significant geographic barriers to overcome, unlike Mount Vernon, Burlington, Cedar Woolley. You know, when they have a significant incident in either one of those cities, they shift their manpower to account for those things. We do not have that ability. Our closest agency is the Swinommish Police Department. Their current staffing level is nine out of 16 positions that are allocated. I would argue that they're worse off than we are. In addition to that, not 100% of their officers have general authority, which would allow them to conduct law enforcement within the city of Anacortes, because they're not recognized by the state as having general authority. So, there's some significant challenges that we need to overcome, and a lot of that is just related to the manpower and being able to effectively use the specialty resources that you're referencing, but doing so in a safe manner.
Right, just as a follow-up to that, which is, but you're really just saying that the manpower hours that you need in order to service the city, meaning both of you, is what is needing the increase. You've got a myriad of calls coming in, a plethora of different issues that you're having to address. My bringing up the social worker and that collaboration is just really for you to point out that those are additional tools that you have at your arsenal, that you're having to use more and more and more, depending upon the call. So, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other?
Mayor McGee. I just wanted to thank you both for a terrific presentation, really appreciate it, and I wanted to acknowledge both departments, AFD and APD, for the fact that they've been running hot for years, and just enormous appreciation for that, because I know, you know, in the face of increasing call volumes, staffing has simply not kept up. I'm in such support of this effort. I know, you know, in discussions with members of both departments, being able to add one person or two persons to a given call acts as a real force multiplier, where there's stuff that simply can't get done unless you add that additional person. And so, there's tremendous risk in that, both to, you know, people like non-department members, but it's also a safety factor for the department members themselves. So, that's another important aspect of this. So, I'm really glad we're doing this and, you know, hope the voters go for it.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you, I have a question for the chiefs, and this may have been something that we discussed in the fall during a public safety committee, but for either fire, EMS, or police, are there mandated time-off requirements between shifts? So, if somebody gets called to stay in for overtime and they were scheduled to come in at noon the next day and they stayed on shift until 6:00 a.m., do they have to delay or miss their next shift because they're required to have a certain amount of time off between their shifts?
And Chief Harris is coming up to the podium if you can't see him.
Yeah, for fire, we can only work, or the staff can work 72 hours consecutive from our EMS protocols by our medical director, and they have to have at least a 12-hour break before they could work more than that. But beyond that, I don't know of any other labor law that would preclude them from working.
Anything to add, Chief Floyd?
There is not a state mandate as much as it's a contractual issue with our union staff beyond their normal work hours, they are paid the overtime, and then they're only allowed to work a certain number of days consecutively in emergency situations. They can be put on 12-hour shifts and not work more than seven consecutive days, but that is for special instances where serious emergencies have been declared. Absent of that, it's just on an overtime basis. As a person that's paid to manage the risk for my department, I will tell you that the increase in not only officer mistakes but injuries exponentially goes up after 12 hours. And so, in trying to manage that, I would strongly try to look for other opportunities or solutions beyond working an individual more than 12 hours.
Took many, many years in the aviation community to figure out the importance of circadian rhythm and, you know, being able to make decisions when you're tired. All right. Any other questions, comments? If you want to take-
Mayor Miller?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Ms. Moulton, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you to both the chiefs for your excellent presentations and all that good information. I think that there, it's been a while now that we've had two police officers on duty sometimes only in the city, and I think that's something we weren't bandying about, but that's real, that's happening. So, we definitely need more staff, and we have for a long time. I also want to say I appreciate the high standards of both our AFD and APD. I think our training is, from what I understand, is above and beyond what is required. I think that the time taken and the professionalism that's engaged and also the de-escalation, how important that is, I think our police department is excellent at that, and it takes time, and I don't want our officers to burn out and not have this be sustainable. We really need to bolster both of these departments for public safety all the way around and for health and well-being of the whole community. And I would like to say, if, hopefully, we'll get these staff on board, and I would love to see police officers being able to go and be at farmer's market, just meeting people and being able to engage with the community on that level, which they don't have a chance to do now. I think that would be great, and just to have more of that, just to have a more present when things aren't going wrong as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Wait, no, Ms. Cleveland McGrath and then Mr. Young.
Okay, thank you. So, the, one thing that I really want to reiterate, because I appreciate the questions we've gotten from the public tonight, is that there was a lot of discussion about what should be included in this levy, and it's really important personally to me that we really landed on the fact that this is only for staffing, it is not for capital projects. There was talk about Station 3 and needing to build the Taj Mahal essentially by the consultants. Fortunately, we were able to get around that and find a solution that is much more cost-effective. So, I think that that really should be reiterated, that this is really for, when you call and you're in your, in an emergency at your most vulnerable, there is someone showing up, professional, that's well-rested, that can respond. I'm glad that you brought up the proximity and the fact that we live on Fennigala Island, we all love that, we all love living in Anacortes, but it does mean that we are, the proximity to other municipalities means that that assistance from Cedar Woolley, Mount Vernon, and Burlington will take longer to get here, so we may have, we are more responsible for having to spend a little more so that at least on that day-to-day front of response time, we've got those resources available. Then, the other one I would just say is that the more we, I've learned about fire and police, the more you realize the emotional and physical exhaustion that's associated with it when you're on the job, the number of times that our police and fire stay beyond their scheduled hours, because they're either having to respond since they're at a crisis point, or because the response requires more time with the individuals and for documentation, for transfers, all of that. transfers, all of that. So it's not a clock-in, clock-out kind of profession, and I think we should remember that, too. The final thing is that I've heard some questioning about for Chief Harris, is can you just speak, because of the fact that EMS calls go beyond the city limits, I just, I, my understanding is that we are compensated and refunded for those calls. Can you just talk to that? Because I think that there's some concern that those are not being funded by the county. And my understanding is that, that we are compensated for those. Is that correct?
We are. So our citizens pay into, it's county-wide into the EMS levy. We get back, after the 20, I don't know how it worked before 2019, but when the 2019, when the cities took over the ALS transport services, when we signed the contract with Skagit County, in 2022, we brought in $1.4 million into the city. And it's not necessarily, it's not on a per-call basis, it's not on a response area exactly. It's a, they give us $1.4 million to participate in the system. And that's about as much a detail as I have on that. It's, but that's what we get.
And if you crawl, 2019 was when we took Station 3 to 24/7, which again required the additional staff in the county, helped kick that off. Sorry, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize that Ms. Pittis had her hand up, and she seemed like she had a question, so just wanted to make sure you were aware.
Thank you very much for that. All right, come on up.
Kathy Pittis, and I'm of Boil, Boil, Mr. the Hot Mike. I live inside the city of Anacortes limits. I'm not used to ever having a time limit with my other hat on, so I might go ahead and read from notes so I can stay within your three minutes. I don't have a question, I just want to make sure that I go ahead and stand up and ask anybody viewing this for your yes vote. I'm going to be that strong to say that I am chairing this committee to go ahead and ask the citizens for a number of reasons. It's not only for myself, it's for my family, it's for my neighbors, it's for our businesses. Time equals life, it also means outcomes. So there's a couple points I want to go ahead, even though they've gone over, I want to leave everybody with, 275 times, there were no firefighter medics that were available to respond to a call. 899 times, when only two firefighter medics were able to respond to a call. And we talked about the advanced life support that's needed. You need more than two that are there. And we have personal family, friends that have needed this within this last year, so I can tell you what those outcomes are and what's needed. In regards to police, 911 calls to the police have increased in the last 10 years, but we've added no patrol officers during the same period, which has driven down police capacity to work other crimes by 30%. I know that this is a statistic, and I've heard it verified by prosecuting attorneys, that presence, having presence boots on the ground deters crime. That's what we need. I want a safe community. Investment in our public safety agency is necessary for our quality of life. And I'm going to reiterate, even though the question was asked and it was answered, this provides eight firefighter medics and five police officers. I thank the city council and mayor for having sideboards on this so we can be guaranteed and assured of our future in regards to staffing. So my plea at the end is, stand behind our firefighters, stand behind our police, stand behind our emergency responders. They've been there for us, they need us now, we need to stand behind them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh-oh. All right, since you all applauded, and violation of our decorum, I do have to state, per law, I do have to give opportunity, equal opportunity for anybody who wants to oppose. Okay. All right, so council, what is your pleasure? Do you want to vote on this tonight and move forward, or we can bring it next week and have additional discussion? But over to you all.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
You know, I think that the public will voice their own opinion. I believe that it, personally, that as, is something that we need, looking at the needs of the city and the residents. So unless there's any other further discussion, I move we adopt Resolution 3113 supporting Proposition 1 on the April 25, 2023 special election ballot to authorize a one-time levy lid lift to provide funding for public safety staffing.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Carter to approve Resolution 3113 supporting Proposition 1, Public Safety Staffing, Levy Lift Lid. Miss, any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, could you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Lots of yeses. Thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation, chiefs, and I think you'll still be around here for a little bit more. Okay, we have a few more items left on our agenda. Item 7B, which is Contract Award 2023 Waterline Replacements. This is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Hash, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Henry Hash, Public Works. Great presentation, complex issues, and I think you would appreciate a very simple agenda item at this time. You know, we have a very elaborate water system and one of the largest treatment land in the state. We have many old water lines, and what we do every year, we have a program to replace it, and this is just that. To replace the old water lines, we recently went out to bed, had very favorable beds, we had eight beds. Our engineering estimate was 999,000. The low bid came at 980,000. So we're very happy, and we're asking your support to award the bed.
Okay. That sounded like it. Ask any questions of Mr. Hash. You want to remind everybody what road, what the major road is? I believe it's Kingsway.
Yes, sir, it is Kingsway.
Okay. And some offshoots, obviously, of the Kingsway.
Sure. Before we do paving on a road, we make sure we do all the replacement utilities, water line, electric, gas, if anything available, and that is what's happening in here. We had a project before that in 2022, it wasn't paved. The reason is the utility work wasn't done. It was done all last year, so this year is going to be paved. This road is for the water line this year, and next year, we will evaluate it for paving or any other type of...
That reminds me of a broken record councilman a long time ago who would say, if you're digging in that road, before we pave it, let's make sure we've got everything in there. So any other questions for Mr. Hash? Any motions, perhaps?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Dig once, I think is the name of the policy. Yeah, I move approval of the contract as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve contract 2023 Waterline Replacement as presented. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please? Oh, any additional discussion? Would you take the vote, please?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We're on to Item 7C, which is Resolution 3112. This is waiving the state competitive bidding requirements for the purchase of iSimulate Reality Plus Patient Simulators. This is a discussion item with possible action, and I think Chief Harris, maybe with the backup, with Chief McDonald backing you up, or you got this.
Yeah, just me tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
All right, we're gonna, I'm gonna do the mic again. You gotta get...
I'm gonna get my own.
Yeah.
The iSimulate is a training device that simulates our cardiac monitors. It does the same controls and displays as our actual monitors, and it allows our instructors to create realistic, real-time training scenarios for our EMTs and paramedics. It functions off of like iPad technology and goes into a case very similar to what our Zoll monitors are, very different than today. Today, we have to use, we just, we talk through things, we pretend, we hold up drawings. This will give feedback. It will give end tidal CO2s, vital signs, everything that the instructor wants to put into it so that our medics can make real-time decisions based on the clinical findings. I believe it'll be a bit of a game changer in how we train our EMS crews. The reason we're asking to waive the competitive bidding process is that there really aren't any competitors. Everything else out there is mannequin-based and can run upwards of $50,000. This is significantly cheaper, comes in just under $10,000, I believe, for the whole package. It's really a one-of-a-kind and a sole-source item. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mayor Miller?
First, I have to apologize. I noticed that's not Mr., or Chief McDonald back there, because he's the one who would point out that I messed this up when I was trying to intubate one of these folks, but Chief Burbank does not, was not witness to that. Sorry, Mr. Walters.
The resolution as presented makes sense to me. I think one missing fact that would support the chain of logic here is, what is our, what is our existing investment in the cardiac monitors that these interface with?
A monitor goes for about $35,000 each, yes.
So, given that these are much cheaper and the alternative is much more expensive, and we already have a $35,000 investment, this makes sense to me.
Fair enough.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton, I think?
Yes.
Uh-huh, thank you. Chief Harris, how many are we looking at purchasing?
Just one, yeah. So we have, we have six monitors, or actually, seven monitors, one on every medic unit, one on every engine, but this is just one for the training facility.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougal?
I move that we approve Resolution 3112 as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Mr. Young to approve Resolution 3112. Mr. Franciac, could you take the vote, please?
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Onto Item 7D. This is Resolution 3115 waiving competitive bidding requirements for the purchase of public safety cameras for the Tommy Thompson Trail. This is a discussion item with possible action. I think Mr. Lunsford's gonna lead it off with some backup by the chief, if required. Mr. Lunsford?
Mayor Miller, council members, audience members, thank you. Let me just start by giving a little update on the trestle funding. As you know, we opened it up a couple weeks ago, thanks to the hard work of our contractors. I want to call out some of our donors and contractors who've helped us raise over $250,000 to rebuild the trestle. So that is Transpac Marinas, Strandberg Construction, Cobertson Marine, the Miller Charitable Group Trust, Marathon Refinery, HF Sinclair Puget Sound Refining, Sammish Indian Nation, Anacortes Noon Kiwanis Foundation, Anacortes Rotary Charitable Association, and the Skagit County Commissioners, and many other folks in the community. Just to give you a sense of where we're at, our contractors, not only do they work very efficiently, but they also donated over $60,000 in equipment and time and not marking out products, just giving us the costs. So because of that, we were able to save quite a bit of money on the project, and we have money available through one of the designated donors to try to get some additional safety on the trestle. We have some old-generation cameras, but we would like to move to the state-of-the-art cameras that, similar to what you already approved for the police department to use in town. So my backup is here, Chief Floyd. He's the expert on what it is we want to do, but that's essentially why we would like to ask you for the sole source, is because we would like to go with what already works, with a system the police department and our IT department are familiar with, and would build on that system. Our desire is to put two units out at the trestle. Each would have three cameras, and we have been struggling a little bit to try to find alternative power, but we found we're going to just go with electric. We had considered solar and other options, but we just can't really do that, given the size of the trestle, which is physically, we can't, we can't support the pole that would do that, so we're having to go with electric. So that slowed us down a little bit, but not much. So we think that we can do this relatively quickly, if you like the idea. Chief Floyd, would you like to say anything about the units that we have, you have arranged?
As Mr. Lunsford already mentioned, the primary reason we are looking at the cameras for the trestle through Security Lines is just the interoperability with the pre-existing camera system. It's proven to be high-quality resolution even during low light, which is many times challenging for camera systems. You'll note that in the estimate from Security Lines, there's two items that are marked upgrade, and that is because after we took delivery of the camera system that's currently out and deployed for the police department, they come out with an entirely new product line, and the cameras that are quoted for the Parks Department to put on the trestle are of this new product line. Part of the camera systems that are in the new product line have a significantly upgraded DVR system with enhanced capabilities, and they are offering to upgrade our previously purchased system for free. So there is a charge, and then the corresponding credit for that, to account for that system upgrade, which will make all the camera systems operate much more efficiently.
Thank you. Any other questions for chief or Mr. Lunsford? And maybe a reminder to the public that this, one of the, one of our larger donors has kicked in for this.
Correct, Miller, yes. So Mayor Miller is correct, that is, this is totally grant-funded by the donors. So all of this will be paid for by them. So not only the purchase here, but some installation charges as well, so.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Short of any other discussion, I move that Resolution 3115 be approved, authorizing the purchase of two public safety camera systems from Security Lines U.S. for use by the city of Anacortes on the Tommy Thompson Trail and waiving the competitive bidding requirement due to a single source of supply.
All right, simultaneous seconds. Motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McDougal to approve Resolution 3115. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters and then Ms. Hubick.
I'm supportive of putting cameras on the trestle. Arguably, we need to maintain that technology as it evolves, make sure that we have the highest resolution necessary for the task. And as we've advocated with the county to upgrade their cameras at the Gremas Ferry Parking Lot, we need to have appropriate cameras at high-risk locations. I am somewhat skeptical of this particular system, since their business addresses appears to be in mailboxes, et cetera, and they have a fax number on their letterhead. But I leave it up to you to pick the right tech for this application. This is, however, a recreational facility as well as a transportation facility. I don't want to be part of creating a surveillance state, and... footage and use it to apprehend suspects. I mean, probably in most cases, you're not able to use it in court to demonstrate precisely what transacted there, unless maybe it was an assault or something like that, and hopefully you've got the resolution to support that. But I don't want just looky-loos browsing footage just, just because, and policies make that happen. So I'm happy to move this forward now, to give the APD the authority to make this happen, but we still do need to follow up with the policies that would constrain potential misuse of it.
Hey, Ms. Hubick, I think?
Thank you, sir. I would just appreciate it if the line items on the estimate are looked at one more time. The discount doesn't look like a discount, it looks like an additional line item on the invoice.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. One last question. How will these be kept safe from vandalism?
Good question. Mr. Lunsford?
So the, one of the camera units will be on a utility pole, probably about 30 feet up. Another one will be on a pole that we create with our staff and probably about 20, 25 feet up. So be well out of the reach of people, and they are in, they are encased in metal, so they are, they are pretty well protected.
Okay. Thank you. It is.
Good questions, and I'll make an unfortunate reminder to the council and the public that we still do not have a suspect for the arson that was committed back in August. Okay, so I've got a, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McDougall. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thanks. Moving on to item 7E. This is Resolution 3114, rejecting all bids for, for bid number 23066 IDS 001, Treatment Plant Chemical, which is sodium hypochlorite. I was able to say that slightly. All right, Mr. Hash?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Henry Hash, Public Works. In both treatment plants, wastewater and water, we use six different chemicals, and we go out to bed on a regular basis. For this one, we already have an existing contract that is valid until the end of August. However, the contractor has sent us a letter requesting some adjustment for different reasons, and we wanted to basically test the market, see how things are, and if we can get a lower bid to save us some money. So we did go out to bed. We had three beds, including the contractor that we already have it. They all came higher than the existing bed, and there is no reason for us to spend extra $56,000 between now and August. So we're going to stay with the current bed, and we going to bed for all the chemicals when it's closer to August.
Thank you. Maybe delaying the inevitable, but we'll still delay it. If it's, yeah, Mr. Walters?
And we had some discussion about this in review at the Public Works Committee meeting earlier today. So I move we approve Resolution 3114 as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve Resolution 3114. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, please.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good work. Thanks for the work, and with no further business before the council, I'll adjourn the meeting. Good night.